Good evening. I'm David Summers. I'm the publisher of The Long Beach Post. With me is Craig Kojin, President and CEO of the Downtown Long Beach Alliance. For everyone out there watching us live, thank you for joining us for the live Candidate Forum, sponsored by the DLBA and The Long Beach Post. We're here at Fingerprints Music. Before we get to the candidates, just a couple of thank yous to Rand Foster and Fingerprints, to our candidates who you'll meet in a moment, to all of you for joining us tonight, to our production crew from LA 36, who's helping with this broadcast tonight, and to our team from The Long Beach Post. I'm going to introduce you to our moderators in just a moment, but first, Craig?
Thanks, David. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for viewing this evening. Thanks for attending here at Fingerprints. This council district is very, very important to our downtown. The majority of our downtown is encumbered with this First Council District, and we certainly look forward to the candidates this evening, their positions, and really getting the vote out, getting the information out to the voters. It's a huge opportunity for downtown, as well as our city, to gain really a stronghold in our leadership capacity with First Council District. So I'm pleased that the council offices are here, the candidates are here. Thanks very much to The Long Beach Post. DLBA will not be endorsing a candidate, neither will The Post, so this was really a natural partnership that we've been able to entertain and certainly collaborate with. So I appreciate The Post's participation. Again, thanks for coming out this evening. We're encouraged by the number of participants that we have tonight, as well as the type of questions, as well as look forward to those responses and look forward to the election in November. Thanks very much, David.
So now, we're going to hand it over to our managing editor, Melissa Evans, and reporter Stephanie Rivera, to moderate our debate. Candidates, thank you very much. Take it away.
Hi, welcome, and thank you to our audience, our live studio audience, for being here, and thank you to our online audience for joining us. Just a couple quick notes on the format for tonight's debate. We're going to give each candidate a chance for a one-minute opening statement. We'll ask a series of questions for all the candidates, then we'll ask some individual questions. Any follow-up questions that we have, the candidates will have about 30 seconds to respond. And just so everyone knows, these questions that we came up with were from our readers, from online polls that we did. So we actually got almost 100 questions from readers. So there's a lot of interest in various topics pertinent to the First District. What else? So we are going to rotate the order of who is asked the first question. And Valerie will be keeping time, and we'll be interrupting to keep each response to a minute. And with that, I'll introduce the candidates. We have Joe Ganem. We have -- we're asking the audience not to applause. I know it's hard. We have Elliot Gonzalez. We have Ray Morcetto, Mariela Salgado, Missy Tagalloa, and Mary Zindejas. And so we hope to have a great debate. We hope it's as fiery as the Democratic debate last night, and we'll have fun tonight. So I'm going to turn it over to Stephanie, who's going to start with the first question.
Okay, so we're actually doing opening statements, and we'll start with Joe and then ending with Mary. Is it Joe?
Well, thank you, and I wanted to extend my appreciation also to The Post and to DLBA for putting this on. I think it's very important for the entire community. My wife, Marcia, and I have lived in Long Beach 14 years, eight of those in District One. And I've been involved in politics most of my life, usually behind the scenes. I've never run for office. This is my first office run and probably my last, except for maybe to run again. I've never seen what I've seen in this particular race, and it's disturbing. It's disturbing because for probably over 20 years, because I don't go quite that far back, we've had a political machine that's controlled who runs this district. And the result is what we're seeing.
15 seconds.
And we have affordable housing crisis, a homeless crisis that's out of control, and I have a history of solving these kinds of problems. So give me that opportunity. Thank you.
Next candidate.
Hi, my name's Elliot. I'm running for the Long Beach City Council because it feels like my heart is on fire for justice. There's not a day that goes by where I am not absolutely heartbroken by what we see out on the street, people sleeping out on the street here in California, the richest state and the richest country in the history of the world. I refuse to accept the unacceptable. Meanwhile, we also have some of the worst air pollution in the nation. The air is so bad, it causes cancer, it causes heart disease, it causes asthma, and some of the precious children's lungs in the community here in West Long Beach and here in downtown. And we know that not only does it affect our blood, is it in our body and our bloodstream, but it'll warm the entire planet. And now, the whole fate of all life on Earth is under threat because of fossil fuel industry, an industry that this city is founded on. So I'm here to say that we must rapidly change our relationship to oil and gas.
15 seconds.
I'm here to stand up for our future. I'm not here to compromise. I'm not here because I'm bought out, because I have some agenda. I'm not here to serve the political power interests. I'm here to serve future generations and to acknowledge generations of the past. Thank you.
Next candidate.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for taking your time out on a Wednesday night to talk or listen to a bunch of people talk about the issues that affect your lives. My name's Ray Morcetto, and I'm running because I feel that I can bring a balanced approach to Long Beach. There's a lot of different voices, a lot of diversity, and a lot of different interests in this city, and we have to work together. One of those things that I like is passion, but the city council needs to work with eight other people up there, as well as a mayor. There's a great opportunity in front of us to bring together different voices and different opportunities. And having worked for the state of California as a small business owner, someone who cares about the environment, I have a unique perspective that I hope to bring to that city council. This fly is making this introductory not that great. But I do appreciate your time. I do appreciate your vote, hopefully coming up on November 5th. And more than anything, I really do appreciate that this is an opportunity for me to try and bring trust back to governing. That's the one thing that I think is missing. Does that person actually have the city and my best interests at heart? That's what you need to do. You may not always agree, but you have to know that it's the best interest at heart, and I'm hoping that I can bring that to city council. Thank you so much again, Ray Morcetto.
Next candidate.
First District has been historically underserved for decades. We have the highest concentration of poverty, pollution, particulate matter, violent crimes, and unemployment rates. I believe it's time for change. I believe that we have been underserved, and I think there's no one more better positioned to do that. I am the only candidate that's community and community leader funded, so I have no special interest, no PAC money, no lobbyist money in my campaign, and believe it's important that you have someone in office that can really advocate for what this community needs. I'm also a mother, a community leader, a city commissioner, and a small business owner. I believe I bring a unique perspective in terms of what we need in this district, what we need in our communities, and what we need for our next generation.
Next candidate.
Good evening. I want to thank you and those who are joining us online for being here. I want to thank Long Beach Post and Downtown Long Beach Alliance for co-hosting this, and I also want to thank Fingerprints for offering us this creative space so we can be here. The city of Long Beach and the First District have real challenges. We have an affordable housing challenge and homelessness crisis, and also, we're breathing bad air. And one of the reasons why I'm running is I'd like to do something about that. Now, we can talk about it. We can pick someone who talks about it, or we can do something about it. We can pick someone that does something about it. And I'm the only candidate who does affordable housing. I've actually taken people off of the roles, out of homelessness, put them in transition on permanent shelter, and I want to make sure that everyone is here, can live, and have a place affordable to live. And I want to make Long Beach work for you.
Thank you. Next candidate.
Hi, my name is Mary Zindejas, and I'm proudly running for the First District City Council. My parents immigrated here from Mexico to the United States when I was a little girl because I had polio. It was because of them and all their sacrifices that I was the first to graduate from high school, to become a U.S. citizen, to actually graduate from a university here in Long Beach, Cal State Long Beach. In the 30 years that I have been a resident, I have earned the endorsement of Mayor Robert Garcia and Senator Lena Gonzalez. As a healthcare director, I work every day to improve the quality of life of our most vulnerable communities. I am running because the First District deserves a true champion that's going to fight for affordable housing, good-paying jobs, and healthy community, and good environment. And that's why I'm running.
Thank you, candidate. First question for all candidates. If elected, what is the first issue or first piece of legislation you will bring forward when seated on the city council? Please be specific about one issue and what action you will take at your first meeting. I'll start with Elliot.
Jesus. Okay, first issue. I would say we need to start with a review of our oil and gas policy. Specifically, I want to stop the sale of water to the oil and gas industry. A lot of people may not know that the city is selling recycled water, which is otherwise used for our parks, for oil and gas production. I believe that the public needs to know this information because that water is permanently contaminated. Once it gets consumed by the oil industry, you can no longer recycle it. I think that it's important that we preserve water for future generations. We know that the planet is going to heat up. We know we just experienced an extreme drought, and we can expect more of that in the future. So I think we need to have an honest discussion, probably for the first time ever, about the city's relationship to oil and gas, because what's at stake here is our future. What kind of planet we're going to leave behind for future generations? Will there be enough water is the question for the future. You need to ask yourself that now. So that's one of the things I would do within the first 100 days. Thank you.
That is a tough question, because one of the things that you have to remember is that you can bring things forward, but if it's not seconded, it's very hard to get things agendized. One of the things that I don't like is that a lot of stuff just goes on to the consent calendar and is kind of just washed away, and it's a lot of spending. I think that there's an underutilization of our auditing for different areas, and I think probably one of the things that I would try and first put on the ballot, I mean, it's a very tough question because I don't, I mean, I'm not there. It's really hard to kind of answer that question because you're not there, you're not working with the folks that are in that. But I think one of the things that really kind of irked me that was just passed was the fact that you have to identify the filer for the police officers, Public Request for Information Act. I have no problem with the police officers getting that recommendation, but I do think that it's a bit of an intimidation tactic, putting that forward and saying, hey, this person has requested this, and you have five days to do something, which is, again, very kind of, we need to fix that relationship with our police officers, and I think that separates us a bit further.
I want to let people know that this is actually a two-year term. So the idea that we're going to do all the work upfront, it's impossible. We're coming into this as a two-year term initially, with the possibility for three, you know, having an incumbent in three more terms. And I want to say that to you because I want you to place into perspective what I think is the priority of this First District, which is the work in the neighborhoods. We have been historically underserved. So for me, the first thing I'd like to make sure we do is to increase civic engagement. Less than 15% of voters will vote in this election, which to me tells me that we have to do more in terms of giving more to the people, to our neighborhood associations, empowering them and ensuring that they have everything they need so that we can create actual, physical change. It's the little stuff that matters in our neighborhood sometimes. And secondly, I want to say that in terms of policy, the one thing that is going to come forth and that we should take ownership of as a First District Council seat is inclusionary housing. That is something that right now, the mayor and the city councils has placed into the planning commission and is looking to vote on it before we take office.
Housing is definitely a real problem, and what I would do is I would advocate and float a $250 million bond. I would put it out and ask the developers to leverage those four times, so that way we can generate a fund of about $1 billion. And then, from that fund, we can create 2,000 additional affordable housing units. On the homelessness development, what I'd like to do is I'd like to, see, here's the dead secret about homelessness. Every homeless person out there is entitled to about $1,000 a month. It's $200 in general relief food stamps and just $200 cash, plus rapid rehousing and the pilot program. So every homeless out there is walking around with a $1,000 check a month. And what I'm proposing to do is put together 2,000 of these beds so we can leverage $2 million a month to help solve the homelessness crisis. One of the challenges, one of the things I've noticed about the homeless is they don't show up for these meetings because they don't belong. So I want to make sure they belong here.
Thank you. Next.
If elected, there are many things that I want to champion. One, of course, is helping our homeless off the street. As you know, we have a crisis right now, and that crisis needs to be addressed immediately. Affordable housing is something that we need expedited because we are in such shortage of affordable housing. And also parking. I know that's something that not everyone talks about, but our district is mostly impacted by that. So I want to bring forth policies that will help us with helping our homeless neighbors, our affordable housing, and also parking relief for us.
Well, I didn't get to say earlier, but I've been a police officer, a city manager, a builder developer, a governmental affairs lobbyist on environmental issues, and an activist for many years. And I'll bring that, including the four years that I spent on the homeless commission, to actually resolve the homeless issue. It's solvable. We're spending $30 to $50 million a year, and we've got about 2,000 people on the street right now. I can assure you that we can use that money in better ways. It doesn't make sense to treat them for social and psychological issues only to send them back out to live under a bridge. We have the Villages of Cabrillo that's housing 2,000 people right now. What we need is another Villages of Cabrillo, or double the size and the capacity of that one, and we can get every person that's on the street off the street within a couple of years. It'll take a while to build that into the process, but we can get it done. It's solvable. Why isn't it being solved? I think you should ask yourself that question, because I have, and I know, and I'm not happy about it.
Second question. Climate change is real. Climate change is real and happening now. As a council member, what specific and concrete actions would you take to reduce greenhouse gases, gas emissions from transportation in Long Beach, particularly as it relates to air quality in the First District? And we'll start with Ray on that one.
I feel like we should have started with Elliot on that one. The honest answer is this has to be a community-based relief effort. It has to be holistic. We have to take it as a priority, and every stage that we move forward has to have this as just the foundation and backbone. There's obvious things like trying to make the port greener using either, you know, battery-operated natural gas, electricity, but there's also other things like improving our mass transit system so that people don't have a stigma, they don't have things where they don't want to do it. You know, if you take a car from one end of the city to the other, it takes 15, 20 minutes. If you take mass transit, it takes an hour and a half. You know, there's things that need to be improved so that people don't have to use their cars. The 710 isn't sitting there. The bunker fuels out in the ocean aren't burning, or sorry, the tankers aren't burning bunker fuel. Things like that. You have to just do it as a holistic approach. Bringing jobs back here is something that you can do as well, where people can bike or walk to work rather than have to drive out of the city. It's a big, big problem, and it's a big problem that needs a big solution, and it's going to be very, it's going to have to be one of those things that we work as a team together.
As I said earlier, we have the highest levels of pollution in our district. We also have the highest rates of asthma with kids. And as of, I learned yesterday that we also have a life expectancy of almost 20 years less than our East Long Beach counterparts. So for me, this is a real, it's a real issue as a mother. I have two kids, and I want to make sure that people know that I think there's multiple ways to approach this. One is, of course, yes, move towards zero emissions, clean energy, clean transportation, renewable energy, and making sure that we're actually have the political will to do that. So instead of having fracking funds, going to general funds to be spent elsewhere, that we're actually having those funds into renewable energies, that we're going into developing microgrids, developing, or even just as a small business owner, I think we have opportunities to also look at it. How are we ensuring that jobs are coming here so we're not having all of our residents commuting outside of Long Beach? So I think there's a multifaceted approach. It's not just one, but it's multiple ways in terms of impacting our environment.
I'm the only candidate who has done something about port emissions. We were working with the schools on the west side, and we even put the air filters in there with help of the AQMD. So I'll continue to do that work. But there's other social determinants of health. I think one of the candidates touched upon it, this whole notion of the community coming together and belonging and taking ownership, and then doing something about what's causing the pollution. Remove the actors, and we need to electrify the Alameda Corridor. And as your councilperson, I'll be advocating for that. I'll fight for our community, and that's what I'll do.
Thank you.
Okay. Two things that I think that we could do to help our environment and that I plan to do, once elected, if elected, city councilperson, is, one, really, really reduce the, and bring in zero-emission vehicles that will be transported through our port, you know, because as you know, our port is our number-one capital driver in the city of Long Beach. So we need to help them. They're doing a good job, but we need to help them. And I've already done that job with Long Beach Transit and bringing zero-emission buses here to Long Beach to better our air quality, and I'm very proud of that. And yes, I am dreaming big because I want zero-emission buses, I mean, commercial vehicles to transport those goods. But if you don't dream big, it's not going to happen, and that's what I would want. And I'll save it for later. Thank you.
True.
Well, Long Beach is situated at the confluence of the San Gabriel and the LA rivers. We're right at the mouth of both of them. We've got the port to one side. We've got a major interstate on the 710 and the 405, and the 605. We're surrounded by sources of pollution. This isn't going to be solved by Long Beach alone. We've got to engage the entire region to recognize that we have to solve this problem, and that if it's not just about Long Beach, it's about LA, it's about all of the communities that are around us, San Pedro, everything, that we've got to participate in solving this problem. We're doing a big thing with the port, and that's great, and it's a start. But, you know, you're still breathing air that's been transported across all these other jurisdictions, and we're still dealing with water that's contaminated as it flows down those rivers. We have to have everybody involved in this fight, and I plan to get them involved in it.
Elliot.
Great. Can everyone hear me all right? So my campaign calls for a Green New Deal. I'm sure you've heard of Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez's legislation. Bernie Sanders is running on it. What this is, is this is a vision. This is a promise to future generations. This is an agreement, an international agreement, that we will work as an international community with everything that we've got to leave this planet healthy and habitable for the next generation, as if the future of life on Earth depends on it. Let me tell you how I'm already starting. I'm asking all of these candidates to start showing some integrity. I refuse to take any money from fossil fuels. I have signed the pledge by the Sunrise Movement. I'm asking all the candidates to sign that pledge. If you've taken money from AES, a natural gas company, that has contributed to just about every council member that has held the seat, including our dear mayor, aspiring Lieutenant Governor, I'm asking them to return that money from their coffers, because it's dirty money. It comes at the expense of our air. It comes at the expense of our planet. I think it is time we take fossil fuel money out of politics. That's how I'm showing that it can be done right now.
Thank you. Third question for all candidates. Long Beach is considering an inclusionary housing ordinance that may require developers to set aside units for low-income residents, or pay into a fund that helps build affordable housing. Do you support this policy? And we'll start with Mariela.
Oh, I just ended there earlier. To be quite honest, I think there could be more, going one back. The city of LA just passed a moratorium on rent increases. To me, that's one of the things we should have done, is had a moratorium on rent increases because we should have stopped the bleeding. Inclusionary housing is part of the package of increasing housing supply and also increasing housing affordability for our residents. I can't tell you enough how many times I've interacted with people who are, you know, who are experiencing $900 rents, who are experiencing $1,000 rent. So for me, this is part of a brighter solution about creating housing affordability for our residents. In terms of inclusionary housing, I think that there is an opportunity for us, new development, and in fact, this should have been something that we should have had earlier because we need allotments of development with allotments of, with affordable housing, and we need to make sure that we're not, we're incentivizing it so that new development has it, and it doesn't have, it doesn't give any incentive for developers to actually place in lieu of, I'm sorry, this is...
Thank you. Missy?
Yeah. I support inclusionary zoning for this reason. It's a market instrument where developers are incentivized to come in and build houses, build affordable units. The affordable piece is important, but we need to take a closer look at that. Sometimes, it's easier just to pay a penalty into a box rather than building the actual unit. So we have, inclusionary zoning is good, but we need to engage the community, take a closer look at some of these pieces. So it doesn't disempower us, but it actually does what it's supposed to be doing, which is including everybody, folks who can afford it, and their grandkids who would love to live next door, but they can't afford that community.
I think it's really good that right now, the city council is looking at inclusionary housing, finally. This should have been done a decade ago when the downtown plan was implemented. I think that if that were the case, we'd be so much further along with affordable housing, and we'd have so much more affordable housing today. So I'm looking forward to seeing what council does because we really need to think today about how affordable housing is going to help us in the future or affect us.
I was on the Affordable Housing Council 40 years ago. I built homes. I've taken raw land, platted out the streets, built the utilities, done the whole thing. I know exactly what's taken, what it takes to do that. Let me tell you what inclusionary housing really is. You're running to build a building, and the city says to you, you're going to have to set aside 10% of those units and make them at less than what you would normally be able to sell or rent them for. And that's the way it works. Guess who pays that 10%? It's not the builder. He's going to add it on to the price of the other 90% that are either buying or renting there. And that's not fair. We have a market-driven system that encourages people to build, which is the one way we're going to get ourselves out of this housing crisis, is to build more property. You can't do that if you've got your foot on top of the neck of a builder who's trying to build more property. They're just going to go somewhere else. I've already had them tell me that. I have one builder who's put over a million dollars into the property and it still isn't even at the permit stage.
Elliot.
Great. So can I hold this? When it comes to affordable housing, yes, I support inclusionary housing. I think it's one of the many tools in the toolbox. I'm also not scared to say that I support rent control. I know that some members, actually, everybody on here does not support rent control. I do think that it is one of the many tools in the toolbox. I'm happy to say that I don't accept money from developers, or from Paps-Kinnian Association, or the Paps family, or any of the people who make a profit from what we call a housing crisis. You've got to remember, there's two ends of this. So there's people who are in a crisis, and then there's people who are making a fortune. They're not in a crisis. The market is hot. So I'm proposing something outside of the market. I'm proposing a community land trust. A community land trust is a legal entity that can own land on behalf of the public for the purpose of providing affordable housing. We need to think outside of the market, because the market will leave low-income people behind, it will leave poor people behind, and the market will leave you in a crisis, which is how we have this current housing crisis now.
Thank you.
So the inclusionary housing thing is a double-edged sword, because I understand, just like rent control, it sounds great on the face value. It solves a crisis right now, but it doesn't. It kind of elongates it and kind of kicks the can down the road, because unfortunately, when you have inclusionary housing, two byproducts happen. One, you've added more regulation and more cost onto developers who already aren't building here, thus creating the housing process, or the crisis. And then, on top of that, you're also kind of incentivizing people to not make more money than a certain line, because then they lose their home. So the inclusionary housing is only good for people who are making an X amount of dollars, and if you go past that, your housing is gone. So now, you're not forcing, but you're kind of de facto asking people to stay poor, or you're asking them to go into the black market or the underground economy, which isn't good. What we need to do is we need to get rid of the red tape. We need to make it more affordable and easier to make housing, because right now, the only way you're going to make your money back as a developer, and as evil as Elliot thinks they are, they're the ones that need to build the houses. So if we need to make them, or we need them to build the houses, we need to make it less expensive and more affordable.
Thank you. Next question. How do you propose to bring a living wage or better job to the First District? I'll start with Missy.
Well, first, I'd raise it, right? I'd raise to a living wage level. I'd figure out what that is, and then I'd put in policy to raise that. And if it's too painful for industry, then maybe we can accrete it. We can raise it a little bit at a time. So, historically, our community helped out with Measure N, right, with the hotel workers, because we were looking at the two Long Beaches. We have the ocean properties, and then we had the other community where we live that serviced the hotel. So, Measure N, I don't know if you remember, but we historically pushed those rates up, and then eventually, everybody else started thinking that 15 is a nice rate. So, we'll continue to do that work as long as I'm on the council.
Thank you.
Having good-paying jobs is very important to me, and very important to the residents of our district. If we plan to, to succeed as, just as having a good life here in, in Long Beach in the first district, we need to have those good-paying jobs. And what I want is, I want to make sure that we attract companies that have those kind of good-paying jobs, because we have a gem right here. We have, we have Long Beach City College, and we have the university. And those students are, are so talented, yet we lose them year after year, because we don't have those good-paying jobs that are keeping them here. So, I, I look forward to working on council, to creating policies that will make good-paying jobs and keep those students here in Long Beach.
There's two areas. One of them, I think, particularly affects the west side perhaps a little more than downtown, but downtown has it too, and that is the increase, the, the fact that we need to increase the number of small businesses. We don't have nearly enough small businesses in this community, and we need to do that. The west side is especially hampered by that problem. The other one represents an opportunity, and that is, because we are a shoreline area, we can attract people, and we do have a lot of new construction going on here, is we should take advantage of the opportunity to encourage more technology companies to come to town, and to provide the jobs that are higher wage, so that they can pay the taxes and help us support those people who are not in a position to help support themselves as much. And while I've got that time, I wanted to say also, I, I created a home futures fund that provides 20% of the down payment towards funding, and it, and it's a tax-free bond that would, would be doing it.
Elliot?
So, when we talk about raising the wages, let's be honest, folks, the minimum wage, if it were to be kept up with inflation, it'd be about 33 bucks an hour. And let me tell you, if you're making less than $20 right now in anywhere in LA County, you're living in a struggle. I know personally, because I make less than 20 bucks, and I can tell you, it's hard. A lot of people are making less than 20 bucks an hour. So, I believe that, that the public sector plays an important role in generating good-paying jobs. We saw that at one point when we had a, a healthy middle class. We had a public sector that was unionized, that offered a lot of work. When we had a depression in this country, we put people to work, putting artists to work, building, doing construction projects. Folks, a Green New Deal is the perfect opportunity to put our people to work, doing some of the most important work that is taking care of the earth, taking care of each other, building homes, picking up all the trash, all the plastics in the ocean, putting solar panels on every roof. Nothing radical about this idea. Barack Obama campaigned on it, Jimmy Carter campaigned on it 50 years ago. I'm talking about a jobs program. Thank you.
Great.
So, a living wage is obviously dependent on how much, how expensive everything is, and, and what you're actually talking about. So, one of the things that we can do is, one, fix the housing crisis, because obviously, if you're paying 30, 40, 50% of your rent, or your wages on rent, that's a big, that's a big chunk of your money right out of that. If we can also bring jobs back to Long Beach by cutting regulation and taxes and things of that nature, everyone keeps talking about lower, or, of lower rent and stuff like that, but that's not tied to lower or capped taxes. We continue to tax everybody at higher, higher, higher rates. The, the Long Beach City Council said, hey, if you raise the, the percentage of tax 10%, here's this fine, but we're going to raise your water by 12. So, it was almost in the same sentence. So, what we need to do is, we need to figure out how to keep costs lower. If we have mass transit that's usable, if we have rents that are affordable, then we have more money in people's pockets, and maybe that living wage isn't as high as it needs to be artificially, which just costs everything else more money altogether. So, there's a holistic approach to this that needs to come from parking, from cars, from mass transit, from lowering regulation. Those things are, those are the things that you have to think of when you're on council, and I plan to do that.
I think of it as three ways. One is, we should leverage the relationships we have at the Port of Long Beach. It is a, a major employer here. So, leveraging those relationships, global relationships, and finding a way to expand, expand those opportunities so that our businesses can expand in their, in growing industries. The second way, I think, is something we, as a small business owner, I know personally, is, they call it the Silver Tsunami. 80% of our businesses with payroll are, are seen, you know, folks that are soon to be retired, and I think there's an opportunity to create worker co-ops, and really ensure that people have an opportunity to have employee, you know, some skin in that business, and really increase their wages. And the third is also investing in our businesses. I really think there's an opportunity, not just in our businesses, but also opportunities, with retraining opportunities from the public sector, making sure that those that are retiring, we're giving those opportunities to get into the public sector, or having, building those kinds of jobs to ensure that people have the economic opportunity to move up.
Thank you. My final question for all of you. What would be your first step as council member towards solving the homelessness crisis, and does it include new taxes? We'll start with Mary.
Well, as you know, homelessness is definitely a crisis, especially in the first district. And what we really need to do is make sure that we get permanent housing for them, and make sure that when we get permanent housing, that they have their wraparound services, so that they don't continue in the cycle and becoming homeless again. So, one of the things that I would want to do is to make sure that we put, I know that it's in an emergency state right now, but we really need to push it even more and make it an urgency state as well. So, we really need to dedicate a lot of time and do it with compassion, but also with an aggressive way of making sure that we're also taking care of those homeless neighbors of ours.
Well, homelessness is one of the reasons I got into this race, because I know it can be solved. We're spending, as I said before, 30 to 50 million dollars a year on just keeping people on the street. That's really what, what happens right now. Permanent supportive housing with wraparound services is the answer. It will not cost us more. There've been studies and, and proof that it actually will cost us less. A Wiltshire County judge recently had a ruling that said that you cannot take somebody off the sidewalk unless you've got a place for them to go. I think we should take him up on that offer. If we build the places for, for the homeless to be, so that we can take care of those that need to get back into, into a living condition again, then why not create a homeless-free zone out of the entire city of Long Beach? It is possible. We're housing right now half of the population that are technically homeless. Those 2,000 there at, at the villages of Cabrillo were homeless. And they're, beside the fact they're there temporarily, they're going to be expected to move on to their life, and more people will move in. Let's get this problem solved and get these people back into their lives, and then bring some relief to everybody.
I would say that one of the ways to address the homelessness crisis is to build homes, you know, that's, they will, a person will not be homeless if they have a home. They may have a drug addiction, they may have mental health issues, and those two tend to go hand in hand, but them being homeless, that'll be solved if you build housing for the homeless. Now, I just want to point out, they've built lots of housing all over downtown Long Beach over the past 10 years. Nothing but housing, there's always lots of housing being built. They just haven't been how, building housing for the working-class people, and certainly not the homeless people. So, we know that we can build housing, now we just have to actually do it. So, I also just want to say this, that the money is there for most of our social issues. I, I refuse to accept that, oh, the money isn't there. That's why I'm calling for a public bank, so that we can actually make the investments that we desperately need to make into the public. I'm tired of being told that the money isn't there for education, oh, the money isn't there for healthcare, oh, the money isn't there for the homeless. No, folks, the money is there. And with the public bank, we can finance the housing that we so desperately need for working-class people and our homeless brothers and sisters.
Thank you.
Thank you. Obviously, this is a big issue, and everyone is very well aware of it, that lives in Long Beach and downtown especially, in these areas. One thing we have to do is, we first off, just need to be honest with ourselves. The Los Angeles Times, UCLA just came out and said, the matrices that they've used to measure who and why people are homeless is just drastically wrong. They've said that like 23 or 28, I can't remember the numbers, percent actually had some sort of mental or substance abuse, when they found that more, more like 71% actually had, had the, had the issues. So, being honest with why people are homeless, because it's an actually, it's an end, not the symptom, that's, that's what's happening, is the end cause. You can build homes, you can do all this stuff, until we have a robust mental health system, until we have a robust, I guess, transitional housing system, until we have those things in, in place, we can't actually ask the police officers to do what we want them to do, which is remove people who are nuisances to businesses, or people who are, or causing these issues that we're having in our day-to-day lives through our alleys and, and those kinds of things. So, when there's not a mechanism to get these, these individuals help, there's not a mechanism to actually get them out of the actual day-to-day lives of us, and that's what we think, I think we need to do.
Just a quick note, real quick. I know some, some of, you can't hear yourselves on your mics, but if you could not touch your mic, you, we can hear you fine on the broadcast. So, just speak loudly so the audience can hear, but everything's good.
Sorry.
It's okay.
My time hasn't started, has it?
We have 4,000 residents annually right now that are experiencing homelessness, and another 20 that are precariously housed. So, for me, the first thing we should be doing is looking at prevention, how to avoid people from going into homelessness, an episode of homelessness. So, you know, are we giving them rental assistance, supportive services, utility discounts? Those are the things. The first thing is to prevent them from entering to the home, in, in an episode. Secondly, I think we need to be increasing shelter capacity. You know, we're so stuck on creating perfect housing. By the time we build anything permanent, I like permanent supportive housing, bridge housing, that's going to take five to seven years. The RDA redevelopment agency was dissolved, so we don't have funding for that. So, the question was whether we are looking to, to fund that. Yes, the, the voter will decide, next year in 2020, I believe, Rex Richardson is looking at that, whether we're going to have a bond or a tax, and I think the decision between it, before the voter will be whether you're going to, you're going to increase Measure A in perpetuity, or you're going to have a tax. I think ultimately, it's also about oversight. You know, we haven't, we've been taxed more than once, and we just need to look at whether we, we are doing it right.
So, my first 100 days in office, I will do what I said I was going to do, create 2,000 slots or bunks for the homeless. And I'll partner with five vendors I've identified who actually does this work, take people off the street, put them on the sofa day one, and then the very next day, they go to the multipurpose center so they can get processed through rapid rehousing voucher pilot program. But I think a much deeper forensic question is, how are we treating these folks, right? Steve Lopez in an article in the LA Times said, homelessness is because of our inhumanity. It's because of how we relate to other people. And this touches on the people that are couchsurfing. Those members of our communities are just a paycheck away from being homeless. How are we treating them? How are we relating to them? Because by the time they hit the streets, it's almost too late. So, I'd like to have a different ethos in the first district. So, we are known as this compassionate district, where people bring a lot of homeless people to.
Thank you. Now, I'll hand it over to Melissa for the individual questions.
All right. So, we've individually curated questions for each of you guys. And just so you guys know, we're, we're doing great on time, so we're at about 6:45. And I'm going to pick on Misi first. So, Misi, in, in particular in your interview with the, with the Post, that we, we interviewed all the candidates, your, your statements and positions at times have been a bit lofty, focused on more values and not really, not so much concrete issues. And specifically, with regard to policing crime in the district, you, you had mentioned that people lack a sense of belonging, but you weren't sure that there was a political solution that could solve the high crime rates in the first district. Yet this, it's a huge problem for readers. In fact, that's one of the questions we got the most, was about crime. So, I'm, we're wondering, why not, if, if this is a problem that can't be solved politically, why run? Why not just continue what you're doing as, as a housing advocate, as a pastor? Why, why seek a seat on the city council?
Yeah. So, it does have a political solution, right? When we codify laws that legislate compassion, legislate an ethos change, that's the solution. And that's one thing that's missing. When you run a church, it's like running a volunteer army. You don't even know who shows up on Sunday. And when you pass the plate, you never know if you're going to get anything, right? But with a codified methodology, we can legislate compassion, have people take a closer look at what else, because we tried everything else, right? And our differences are so vast, that there's got to be a solution other than our differences. And that's where that's coming from. And I think I'm uniquely positioned and equipped to be able to see that amongst all the eight candidates.
What, what would a position, what would a piece of legislation before the city council, what, what would that look like, specifically legislated?
How about having a law against people sleeping on the streets? And, and the onus of the implementation of that law rests with the community, right? So, here's an example. I run the Second Samoan Church, and every other Sunday, we pass out food and a little bit of change. But every once in a while, we get truckloads of people that bring in sandwiches in addition to what we give out, right? So, so what I'd like to do is, I'd like to create a clearinghouse where a lot of these compassionate people can show up and actually help the homeless.
Okay. So, Mary, we'll turn to Mary. And actually, you're the lucky winner, you get two questions. They both have to do with campaign finance.
Okay.
So, you've received $500 in campaign contributions from a luxury housing developer named Frank Surian, who's been involved in discussions with the potential Angel Stadium down on, on the Elephant Lot, which is in the second district, but it's an issue that may come before the entire council. First, are you, do you support the idea of a, of a stadium on that property? And second, how will you guarantee an independent decision, given that donation?
Well, that's a very complicated question right there, because I would like to say, yes, I support the stadium, because I think of all the jobs that it could bring to, to us here, to the, you know, our residents and stuff, and because I'm so pro-jobs, I think that that's awesome. But then again, I'm like, no, you know, we, we here in Long Beach, we love the small-town kind of feeling, and we don't, we like this for ourselves. Call us selfish, but we like to keep it for ourselves. And as far as, so I'm like, not sure, you know, because I want those jobs, but yet, I also want, you know, the, the small-town feeling for Long Beach. Would, how would I become, you know, be independent? I think, as I have been all my life, I've had to fight very, very hard to be an independent woman, and so, being on this...
Your time is up. Sorry. The second one as well has to do with a donation, and I'm going to have to read this one, because it's complicated.
Okay.
A generating facility owned by the Indiana-based power company AES was recently issued multiple emissions violations from the, from the AQMD, as its Long Beach and Huntington Beach facilities during its commissioning of a new natural gas turbine. Should have written that better. Community members raised concerns, yet facility personnel never responded to our questions regarding possible health concerns. Your campaign did receive a donation from AES. How do you defend receiving money from a known polluter?
Good question again, you know? One of the things that I said that I, when I started this campaign, is that I would not seek money like that. That was some, you know, as our campaign, people come, if they like your message, you know, they come and they donate to you. So, my thing is that, you know, that's what they did. They liked my vision, they liked what I have to say, and that's why they donated to my campaign. Now, it's hard for me to think like, you know, like, in those terms, when I know that that company is not doing great but for air quality. So, it, you know, it made me think about it. So, and if people are, people know me and know what I stand for, so I feel comfortable with that.
Would you consider returning the money?
I would consider that, yes.
Not to sound cynical, but, you know, I, companies give money obviously for a reason. So, you would consider sending, giving the money back?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I have considered it.
Okay. All right, we'll turn to Joe. So, Joe, you've talked about homelessness quite a bit. You served for four years on the Homeless Advisory Commission, and, as well as on the Continuum of Care Board. So, you've been in a position of power or authority to, to do something about the homeless issue in the first district and in Long Beach as a whole, yet the problem persists. So, our question is, why should voters trust that you can get something done on this issue?
Well, that's excellent. Actually, I was advised not to get on that commission by many people who knew about homelessness. And I got on it anyway, and I studied the issue, and I attended all the various places that are serving the homeless population. that are serving the homeless population and got to know a great deal about it. But I finally left when I realized that they weren't in a position to do anything. They are advisory and it doesn't go any further than that. And unfortunately, we have a lot of really talented people that are working in the social services network, but until you have a place for people to live, you're just, you can only do so much. And that's why I left. What I'm proposing instead is to push for permanent supportive housing that makes those services count and finally get people off the street. I've been pushing videos on Facebook and on Instagram, some of you have seen, are pretty powerful. And wait till you see the next round coming out with rats going between the tents of people living under the bridges on the LA River Trail. I think you'll understand why I'm so passionate about changing the lives of those people and improving the lives of our citizens.
How would you pay for homes, for the homeless?
Well, you know, this has been done in other places. For example, I mean, we currently are supporting most of the programs at the villages of Cabrillo. You know, if you've been out there and you see that, and I invite any of you that have an opportunity to do so, to go and see it. It's a village, it literally is. It's like a small community. You would have no idea that there are people living from homeless conditions in this place. Those, the monies that we're spending in addition to the, what the city has in its budget, what the hospitals pay, what it costs for police and fire and public works and all the others that are engaged in dealing with the consequences of homelessness can go towards providing housing and getting those people off the street and finally servicing them.
And I should, I should have reminded ahead of time that you'll have 30 seconds to respond to follow-up.
Okay, sorry.
So that's my fault. All right, so we'll move to Elliot. Elliot, you've, are very passionate about the environment as you, as we engage with you in our post-interview and here tonight as well. But a lot of the things that you say are big. They're more seemingly fitting for a national stage almost. For example, you've talked about divesting in fossil fuels. And that's not, I don't know that that's something the city council has power to do. So specifically what, what power would you have as a council member to enact some of these policies deriving from the Green New Deal and some of these other big lofty ideas that you've stated?
Absolutely. So let me just clarify one thing. The city already has investments in oil. So we can divest our own coffers right now. We can also show leadership and ask for every institution in the city, Cal State Long Beach, to divest from natural gas. We can make these divestments ourself. The port of Long Beach, our number-one import, is crude oil from all over the world. Our number-one export is petroleum coke, a fossil fuel so dangerous that it can't be burned in the United States, so we send it to some poor country to go poison their air and warm the planet, you know, all of our planet. So we do a lot of oil business. This is a city founded on oil. So this is a city in the perfect position to take the leadership, to show California, to show this country, to show this world that it can be done because it must be done. So there's, there's nothing radical about this. I think that, you know, of course, I'm talking about a larger issue. We're talking about global warming. Of course, it's a larger issue, but a lot of it starts right here in our backyard, right here in the city of Long Beach, right here in the First District, right here at the port. So that's, so that's where, so yes, we can divest. And in fact, we have millions of dollars already invested, and we should move those millions of dollars to renewable energy.
So, but if we, if we were, because the port of Long Beach is a city agency, they operate fairly independently, but if we were to divest from, you know, no more imports of petroleum coke or these other, these other environment-harming substances, that would mean a pretty significant loss of profit.
Absolutely. And what the biggest, I'm not concerned about their profits, that's not our profits.
But for the city too, though.
That's profits that end up in, well, we get a trickle-down effect. But the profits don't go to us, and profits end up in the private hands of a very wealthy industry. And we just get a small percentage. But let's also talk about what we lose if we don't do this. We're going to lose our city. We're going to, we're already poisoning the air, we're already costing these children their breathing capacity. Somebody's child has to get asthma. So to me, those kind of risks or sacrifices, these children's lungs and all of the future of life on Earth, is not something that we put a dollar amount and think, well, AES and the Koch Brothers and whoever's making their fortune-
And your time is up. I just want to, so, so you're willing to sacrifice some jobs for a cleaner environment?
Uh, no, I'm not willing to sacrifice jobs. I'm calling for us to create new jobs, and I'm sure as hell not willing to sacrifice anybody's children's lungs.
Okay. Thank you. Ray, so you have said that you did not support the initial passage of Measure A.
Correct.
The sales tax measure that was passed a few years ago. But you do support the extension that's on the ballot in March.
Right.
Measure A has paved the way for a number of projects across the city. Some of the projects in the First District have included improvements to parks, including Drake, Admiral Kidd, Hudson. It paid for a new green belt restoration along Drake and a new pump station for cleaner water. If it had not been for Measure A, for that sales tax revenue, how would you have made needed improvements in the district? I mean, because the city does have very real budget limitations.
Absolutely. This kind of actually highlights the, kind of my background and understanding that pragmatic solutions to actual reality is how you have to solve issues. I don't think that taxing people again is necessarily the way you solve a spending problem. So what happens is when you pass a sales tax, having worked for the actual sales tax agency for the state of California, it's something called a regressive tax. When you take another half a percent or a percent away from the poorest people in the, in the district, that hurts their spending, which again hurts the sales tax revenue, and now it's a cyclical problem. So I don't think that higher taxes and those things would be necessarily what we need. I just think it's the easiest way out when you use scare tactics like, hey, if you want police or a hospital or firefighters, pass a sales tax. Well, the residents of Long Beach are very willing to give of their money if it's for their city and they love this city, but I think that the powers that be know that. They do polling, and then they trick people into taxing themselves because they don't want to lose their, their safety or things of that nature, when those are the priorities that should be set first and then move on from there.
So you are opposed to the promotion of Measure A, to the, like you said, the scare tactics that were used? So how would you specifically find money then for things like improvement to parks?
That's the hard question. You have to be willing to be, like in the interview, I said, sometimes leadership requires you to be that person that gets yelled at. And one of those things that you have to do is you have to really set a priority saying, here's, here's what we stand for as a city. We stand for, and then delineate it. You can have a, you can have a, that's what the nine different voices are for. You know, the mayor sets the precedent, and then the nine people in the district, or the nine different districts figure out how to fix it. And you have to do that. You know, the, there has to be a hierarchy for things. Everyone has their issue and everyone's passionate about it, but it's the city council's job to make those tough decisions.
Thank you. And Mariela, you've said that the First District has borne too great of the burden for building housing, affordable housing. This is obviously a very touchy issue around the city of Long Beach, where this affordable housing is going to be built. And I've personally seen a lot of council people try to make, you know, progress on this, but it's tough. Where specifically would you propose affordable housing and housing for moderate income earners be located? And are you willing to take on those voices in other districts?
Absolutely. You know, we, this is the affordable housing crisis and the homeless crisis, it's hand-in-hand. I mean, people don't realize, 52% of those counted in the homeless count were experiencing homelessness for the first time. We built 90% of all new development in our First District as luxury rentals, which lit the fire on rent increases. So for me, it's not a question of, you know, should, should we think about it? Should we, this is a citywide issue, a regional state. This is all across our state. So we have to have the tough conversations. You want to talk about leadership? It has to start as a citywide approach. It can't be solved. And the other thing is that there are unintended consequences when we choose to also concentrate poverty and small pockets. I serve on the school site council at Edison Elementary, which is the fourth lowest-performing school. When you have a lot of English learners, when you have, you're taxing our teachers, you're taxing our park systems, you're taxing everything else. And in return, as a taxpayer, you're also then going to have to have these tough conversations of whether you're going to add another tax to, you know, get around that.
Would you, so would you support denser housing in places like East Long Beach? Because I know that was a big issue during the land use element discussions. Would you support denser building in other places?
I, I remember, I was part of the land use elements in some respects, some conversations. And I think there's an opportunity to revisit it and look at the mixed-use development, look at different types of housing. And you have seniors that are looking for housing. My mother herself is on a two-year wait already. Student housing, you know, we need more housing for alt incomes and all abilities. I also like to think that there's an opportunity now with the state legislation with ADUs, we might be able to actually add that as an option into the stock. I mean, it's a partnership, and we need to look at it on the entire city, not just in one area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. So we're going to move into the lightning round.
Ooh.
Sort of. We have one more traditional question, then we'll move into closing statements. So you all have 30 seconds to respond to this question, which we already alluded to with Ray. But tell us whether you support the Measure A extension, which is on the ballot in March, and why? And we will start with, who are we starting with?
Yeah, I'm Joe.
Joe.
No, I don't support it, and I'll tell you why. When the council brought this before the voters, they promised them a limited time for this to expire, and they should honor that. We need to find a way to tighten our belts and live within our means and accomplish the things that we're, we need to do as a community and spread the burden properly. A sales tax, as I think Ray said, is regressive. It hurts the people at the bottom end more so than anybody else. Let's stay with our word and follow through.
So I'm undecided as of now. I think there needs to be some reform done. So when they passed Measure A, they said parks and libraries and all this other stuff, but the people who ended up getting it was the police. They should call it the police tax and not Measure A, just so we're secure, we understand where that money is going. So unless I see that money being reformed to actually being in the general budget as promised, right now I don't support it until I see that there's been some reform on it.
Unfortunately, it's, it's the best of a bad situation. I didn't, I didn't want it on the ballot. But if we don't pass it, then the money goes to the county and then gets filtered back to us. And if money goes to the county, who knows if we'll ever get it. So unfortunately, yes, but there has to be accountability. Because again, I don't like that every single time there's a tax, it's for safety, it's for hospitals, it's for the worst of the worst scenarios. We need to have some more accountability and very, very much transparency on where those dollars are actually going. Because if it's coming in and it's going right to pensions, that's not what you said on the ballot.
No, I don't think we should be taxed in perpetuity. That's, some people don't realize that's forever. And I think we should honor what we said, which was a 10-year tax. We, we're only in year two, so we haven't even seen the entire revenues of this tax. So for me, it's a matter of also looking at, I personally don't mind being taxed, but I want to know that it's being, there's some strong oversight and there's transparency in this process. Like Elliot said, you know, there is, there was an article recently that's talked about some of those funds being into, into our police officer pension. So for me, it's really important that we're looking at it from a reform perspective, too.
So I would support an extension of the Measure A for this reason, because we've got a lot of problems that need to be solved. But echoing some of my colleagues' response, we have to be good stewards of these assets. We have to be transparent. For far too long, the district has been left out, all these decision-making. And as your representative, I would provide that voice for all of us.
Thank you. I absolutely would support Measure A, especially when it means that it provided one of the first ADA parks here at Drake Park, the playground. And if we don't pass Measure A, that doesn't mean that our sales tax is reduced. It just means that the county measures that have passed will now take over. So our tax, sales tax remains the same. The only difference is that if we do pass it, that every single penny on the dollar will remain here in Long Beach. So that's why I support it.
Thank you all. And so we'll now, we'll allow you each to have a 30-minute, or 30-second, sorry. That would, that would go on for a long time. A 30-second closing summary. And we'll start with Elliot.
So I didn't get to talk about everything I wanted to talk about. I, I'm very concerned about our changing climate about the next five to 10 years before the planet reaches the point of no return. I'm very concerned about the International Panel of Climate Change's assessment, that this planet may not be healthy and habitable for the next generation. I'm not here to build a sports stadium in this crucial time. I don't think we should be concerned ourselves around building sports stadiums. We should be investing in the public, investing in housing, investing in a jobs program. Nothing radical about that. Dr. King called for this 60 years ago. This is what society looks like when you don't listen to King. I listen to Bernie, I listen to King. And I, that's why I'm running to-
Your time is up.
-to give somebody a justice candidate. To vote for.
Thank you again for everybody who's watching at home for taking your Wednesday here in person to Fingerprints, to LB Post and DLBA. Again, my name's Ray Morcaccio, and I'm running for the First District because I think that people are yearning for a little bit of trust, transparency, and when someone says they're going to try to do something, they actually do it. And I want to be that champion for the First District. We've seen candidates come in, move out immediately, and the district has had the same problems for more than a decade. And I just want to remind people that this isn't just two years. Hopefully, it can be 14. And you, how about 14 years of uninterrupted prosperity and progress in the First District? To learn more about me, please go to votelbray.com, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Mariela.
You know, the First District, this isn't about being the first of anything, the most experienced. It's about, to me, the question before the voter, who you trust? And I am the only candidate that's supported by community and community leaders. There's no special interest in my, in my campaign. There's no PAC money or lobbyist money. So to me, that should tell you as well, if you're going to be the person that's, I am the one that's going to be positioned to really be in, in support of the things that our community needs. And for me, it's very important that people know that. I'm here to serve you. I'm a public servant. My name's Mariela Salgado. I'm a mother, a city commissioner, a small business owner, and a community leader, and I'm here to serve you.
The voters have a chance. City Hall for far too long has been for special interests and insiders. But the First District has been left out. So now they have a choice. They can either vote for someone who talks about doing good things, or you can vote for someone who's done things. I intend to be that candidate. I've been doing it for a while. I've lived in the First District for 25 years. And my website is misiforlb.com. Misiforlb.com. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am so happy to be here. Thank you, Fingerprints, for having us here. On day one of my campaign, I knew that I was going to have to work three times as hard as any other candidate for this position. And I have, and it's been showing in my numbers. And yes, you know, I'm doing really great, but the reason I'm doing really great is because I choose to run a positive campaign. I choose to stay focused, and I choose not to, not to tear up other people in order to uplift myself in this race. And that is important to me. I would rather lose with integrity-
Your time's up, Mary.
...than win with no integrity. So remember to vote for Mary Zendejas for Long Beach City Council. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Joe.
Well, thank you again to everybody who sponsored this and for all of you for coming out tonight. I came out of retirement to do this because I attended the first forum with all of the people on stage. And I said, I went home and I was very troubled by it and jumped up in the middle of the night and said, oh, hell no. This isn't going to stand. We have to have somebody there that's going to represent this district, that has the background and the backbone to get the job done. That's why I'm running. Go to votjoegannam.com, and I'd appreciate your support on November 5th.
Thank you. And thank you to all the candidates. We appreciate your willingness to come out and share your viewpoints with voters, and we hope that voters will show up at the polls on November 5th. And please remember to register to vote. For a recording of this forum, go to lbpost.com, check our social media accounts. And we want to thank our studio audience as well for coming out to support the candidates in the forum, and we'll thank you all. Thank you.